Six thirty P M and we will call this committee of the whole to order. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda and it's moved by deputy mayor Foddy, seconded by councillor Lackey that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any comments or questions on the agenda as presented? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Next item is declaration of cuneary interest in the general nature thereof. Is there any interest to declare this evening? And we have, sorry councillor, maybe we see you there online. So thank you for joining us virtually. If for some reason I miss you and your hand up, please use the raise your hand function. That'll help us to move forward with that. So no declarations at this point. So we'll move to number four, which is in camera and there is no in camera session this evening. And there are no delegations or presentations. So we'll move to number six, which is staff report six point one zoning by law amendment number D fourteen dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero one nine eight one Foster Bay Lane. And the motion comes forward from councillor Jamison, seconded by deputy mayor Foddy. The committee of the whole recommends that council approve the zoning by law amendment to rezone the subject property from rural RU to shoreline residential RS attached planning and development two thousand twenty four dash zero zero one as exhibit F. So this was the subject of a public meeting prior to committee of the whole. So if there are any other additional questions from council, please raise your hand. And I don't believe we have anybody online at this point. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item on the agenda is six point two grant match support for Ontario, Ontario Trillium Fund. At the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize staff to engage grant match to apply to the Ontario Trillium Fund for the Ascot Archives facility. Moved by councillor Jamison, seconded by, sorry councillor Kelman. At the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize staff to engage grant match to apply to the Ontario Trillium Fund for the Ascot Archives facility. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead councillor.
Thank you and through you, your worship. When I looked up grant match online and I look up the general concept, I see that there are more than one companies involved in this. So my question would be, one, how did we arrive at grant match? Two, are we committing to exclusivity on all projects or just each one that we would hire them for? In other words, if we, could we play the game a little bit and get another company of which there are to do other work? So in other words, could we play with two of these folks? Not that there'd be a particular reason, I'm just curious about that. And as I looked over their webpages, it isn't rocket science. You could go on the Ontario site and see tons and tons of opportunities. There's a group called Grant Watch, not Grant Match. They put out a publication. It's got dozens and dozens indigenous this, indigenous that, just one after the other. The amounts of money are not tens of thousands, pardon me, are not hundreds of thousands of dollars. A lot of these grants that these people are getting are seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars. And I know we're shooting for the moon here, but I just want to have people put their feet in reality that a lot of these grants, these folks are getting are not particularly helpful, yes, particularly large, no. And there are dozens of them. So it, it meant this isn't the only company doing it. And so I was curious how we arrived at it, at this particular group. And it is an American start. This group was started in America and morphed over into Canada. It says right on their website. So this model, I would be more comfortable with a little more information. It seemed pretty straightforward, nothing more than they take a cut of something. But it just seemed a little too good to be true. So I'm just hesitant and wouldn't mind filling out, fleshing it out a little bit, who they are, how, how it came to our attention. Did anybody look at the website and see what actually happens? I mean, right there, this trillion thing we're going to be talking about later, it's right there. There's a trillion, two hundred million dollars, blah, blah, blah. Just posted probably in the last month or whatever. But there's all kinds of them there. So it didn't strike me as rocket science. Thank you.
I think I'm going to go to the treasurer to talk about the history of Grant Match because I believe you had worked with them in a previous life.
Yeah.
And you can fill out that, that part of the question and then we'll go to Dave for the specifics.
Through you, madam mayor. Yeah. So how we arrived at Grant Match was when we were approached. And then two, I do have prior experience in a prior municipality, working with Grant Match and being successful on a few different grant opportunities. So yes, there, there are other groups that provide the same or similar service to Grant Match. We are, my comfort with them from prior experience that definitely brings another higher level of comfort with them. That's not to say that I think it is important to emphasize there is no exclusivity with them. We, even if we engage with them for a particular grant, doesn't mean we have to engage with them on every grant opportunity. Doesn't mean we can engage other grant writing companies that do this as well. But yes, I do have prior experience in my prior municipality and they were quite successful with us. And they were on a few grants that otherwise we, we wouldn't have applied for. So.
And do you recall the amounts just for interest sake?
The, they were, they were just around like in the low six figures, so around a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. So to round out the question about the specifics on this particular application, director holiday can final, pin a bow on that.
Thank you through your worship. So this specific project for Ascot, we have applied previously for the Ontario Trillium Fund and were unsuccessful. Even though we had letters of recommendation from the, the user group, the archives, it didn't seem to, to matter. We, we still were unsuccessful. Additionally, we applied for two federal grants and had consultants prepare that for us. We were unsuccessful with those. So this is just, you know, let's, let's test the waters, see how they do. And we didn't have the capacity to, to address this ourselves. The, the deadline on this is so, so tight. It closes in two days that we couldn't pull all the information required together within, within a timely manner to put a, a, an application in. So figure we, we give them a chance. They, you know, under, under the impression that they, they may not be able to apply for this for us. They still, you know, put it out there that they would prepare the application. So if council decided that, no, we're not going to proceed with the, the Ontario Trillium Fund, they, they put the effort in and, and it was a, you know, a measure of, of goodwill to, to do that on our behalf in advance of getting approval. So I, I think it speaks volumes for the, the group themselves.
Any other questions? Go ahead councillor Lackey.
Thank you, worship and through you. Once we use them, if we do this time, what if any are the obligations that we have to them moving forward beyond that? I thought in the first report that came a few weeks ago, that there was a period of two years or something they'd like to have a contract for. Can we just go over all of, if any, again of the obligations that we may encounter?
Do you want the C O to respond to that or? Okay, I'll let the C O respond.
Uh, thank you worship through you. The, the contract's not, it's, it's not exclusive. So, so while we, we could send, assign a, a, a contract with Grant Manager for any length of time, it doesn't handcuff us to them. We can, we can write our own grants, we, or grant applications, we can use other firms. It's just that we have an existing contract with them. So it's a little easier to be able to use them because we've already got the contract in place. But there is no obligation. There's no minimum dollar amount. There's, there's nothing that obligates us that we have to use them under any circumstance.
So, so I guess my question then would be, then why the two year time period? Why is that in there then?
So generally you want to have an agreement in place so that the terms are, are in existence. So when there is a, a grant opportunity that arises, we don't have to negotiate a contract with terms of payment and all that sort of stuff. For, as it comes up, there may not be time for us to get in front of council to get approval to issue a contract and then come back for approval to get to the, the application. It also would be a duplication effort. Every time we had to do a, an application with them, we'd have to do a separate contract and it just the, the basic terms would be the same for every, every grant application that we would have. So this eliminates the, 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 the redundancy of it all. And I wouldn't have, I, because of the non-exclusivity, I wouldn't have problems signing a contract for a longer duration with them, just because it'll just sit there. And if we use it, we dust it off and the terms are already there.
Any further comments? I'll take deputy mayor Foddy and then back to councillor.
Thank you worship through you. Would this contract give them, put us in a position with them as perhaps a better way to word it? That we would give them a heads up as to what we're looking on down the road for projects and then they could surf to see what would be applicable. So that would be part of the mindset for the contract?
I'll go to the director.
Thank you through your worship. The director of corporate services and I have already met with Grant Match and provided our multi-year plan for our big capital projects that are upcoming. And they have sent us one notice already of, of a grant opportunity that's out there. We just, we get an email from them that I think all of their clients get if they have similar projects. And you know, it's up to us. If, if we would like to pursue it, then we reach out to them and engage them or, or we just, we can deal with it ourselves.
Follow up if I may. Well, that, as I think I touched on at the last meeting, that to me would give me more comfort because I don't think with the staff were busy enough or they are, staff is busy enough now that they couldn't possibly search every applicable grant, I wouldn't think based on what I'm learning here. So if this contract keeps them on the hook to keep us in the know, I think that's a pretty fair trade based on the fact that we're not.
For no obligation and no cash.
Exactly. Thank you.
Up front, I should say, I should finish my sentence, cancel up front. Sorry councillor, go ahead.
When I was reading data from, again, the group called Grant Watch, not Grant Match, they have a, a website out and I'm not sure it's not just an org.org. But one of the discussions that they had on the paper was what is the correct amount of money on an hourly basis to be paying a grant writer? Simple. And it said, you got a junior bird dog right in your grant. And it had, you know, like say a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, whatever. And as it went up that ladder, it said, you should not be paying more than about five hundred dollars an hour for the absolute top end with ten years' experience at all levels of government writing grants. So if you do the math and you start thinking, what do you get for your money if you were to go outside to a profession? And there are professional grant writers out there, not hard to find. I found three or four within an hour. That would be sort of what you're up against. I'm not suggesting we go there, but just as a baseline. So if we're going for, and they're charging 10%, is that my understanding here? They're charging 10%. And so I would perhaps ask our treasurer if in a previous life, they felt that that was good value for their money. I don't think we'd have this discussion if they didn't feel it was. But I think I was just trying to get a baseline. If we were going for outside consultant, that would be an outside grant writer, what would be a reasonable number? So what I'm throwing at you there was what it says right in here, you're in that five hundred bucks, top end, top, top end for very professional slick grant writing. It seemed awfully high, but lawyers are far more than that. So as a baseline, nothing personal. So I'm kind of torn, but anyway, that, that would be the baseline for me. Measuring this from. So there's hardly a question there, but I would like to know from the treasurer, did they feel they were always getting value for their dollar at, and were they paying 10% on the grants? And could we flesh out a little more? What type of grants were they capital? How many grants did you get for two hundred thousand dollars, which is a ton of money these days from the government? It appears, or were a lot of them seven thousand dollars? Thank you.
Through you, through madam mayor. Yeah. So the grants we got, I do feel we got our value from them. So in our experience with Grant Match, they do put a lot of resources into it. Like you said, there's usually a junior writing the grant. But speaking with them, like I know they have editors, they have proofers, they have people managing it. So there is a lot of resources that go into it. In our experience with them, we typically use them for kind of, I don't know if the proper term is like a mid-level grant. So those grants that were kind of in like the seventy five thousand on your half a million kind of range. Larger grant opportunities above that, a lot of times we did prepare those ourselves. Just as you say, for a 10% fee on a much bigger grant, maybe the value's not there. So we did have other grants that were in the millions of dollars that we, we did prepare ourselves because we didn't see the value in paying that 10%. But on grants of eighty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I definitely feel the values there if they're taking eight thousand or nine thousand dollars in that kind of range, other 10%.
I think just to also add something to that, because we're not paying upfront and if they're not successful, they're still not making money. If the, if the grant is not successful and being awarded, they've, they've done the work and they're out the time, the effort. So to your point about the hourly rate, it's a very good point. However, because we're not paying upfront, they're, they're taking the risk, if you will. So it's definitely in their, in their best interest to put their best foot forward to hopefully be successful because obviously that won't get them paid. It's like most sales jobs, not every sales call is going to get you a, a sale, but you have to put the work in just the same. But I did have a specific question for the director. The grant that we asked a consultant to write, what was it seventy five hundred that we paid to have that done? I can't remember.
So we've applied for two different grants already for Ascot. We paid five thousand dollars for the first round with the one consultant and we paid ten thousand dollars for the, the second consultant for the, the federal grants that we applied for. And we were unsuccessful with those.
So we've invested fifteen thousand and had no results.
Correct.
So I guess the flip side of this is we've got nothing invested. We were able to hand off what details that we have that has already been done. And they could spin it in a different way, in a different light, with different buzzwords and whatever, and maybe be successful because we've already put that money out. And that's part of the challenge with using separate consultants upfront because we're, we're shouldering the costs regardless, regardless of whether we're successful or not. Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that when Phil and I spoke with Grant Match, there are three tiers of involvement with Grant Match for applying an application. We have the grant writer, which is the junior person. They have a supervisor who reviews it. And then it gets pushed up to the manager as well. And they have their eyes on it before it gets submitted to us for a review.
So there are levels of checks before it goes to live. Go ahead deputy mayor Foddy.
Thank you worship. I just had a thought there. How do these companies like Grant Match, Grant Watch? How do they operate once they get a go ahead from municipalities such as ourselves? Are they actual lobbyists toward government money? Or is it a lottery system and they're just hoping for the luck of the ball to drop with the right number?
I don't believe they're lobbyists.
No.
Yeah, through you. Yeah, I don't believe they're lobbyists in any way. That's not to say, I'm sure they have connections and know people. I think a big part of their value is they prepare these thousands and thousands of grants and they know the words, they know the wordsmith and they know the key things they need to hit. And they know how to frame it to have the best chance at success. They know what the people who are approving the grants are looking for. So I think that's a big part of the value.
So I'm going to go back to the original motion, which is the, oh, sorry, Brian, my apologies. Thank you. The clerk caught me. Go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor and through you. Number one, I think this is a great opportunity to test the waters with this particular program to see how, how, how well they work and if it's works well. The other thing to the director of operations, how does this additional money, if we are successful? How's that play into the whole plan of looking after what these buildings need? Thank you.
Thank you through your worship. With the Ascot facility, we've identified, you know, there's about a million dollars in investment into this facility so that this money would, would help subsidize some of the, the requirement for taxpayers. That's, that's our intent anyways, is to, to offset some of those expected costs.
Follow up?
Uh, thank you very much for that. I guess how much more might be required with this win with what we already have in the bank to fully, fully repair this building to the standard that we hope to have it in the near future. Thank you.
I think our estimates were around a million dollars. If I'm not mistaken, there was a half million in between this year and what we carried over from last. So that would leave a, a funding gap remaining of three hundred thousand for twenty twenty five.
Okay, okay. So going back to the main motion, which is that the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize staff to engage Grant Match to apply to the Ontario Trillium Fund for the Ascot Archives facility. Are there any other comments or questions in regards to the motion as it's presented? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Thank you very much. Next item is long-term care fundraising requests. And the motion comes forward from deputy mayor Foddy, seconded by councillor Jamison, that the committee, the whole recommends that council approve option blank as attached to long-term care funding request, corporate services, two thousand twenty four dash zero zero three. So um, our poor treasurer had a tough time putting together this report and we, um, we know that it's lengthy. However, I think the, the main thing is that there's a number of options here for us to talk about. So how I think I'd like to attack this from the chair is just to get feedback from everybody to figure out where everybody's thoughts lie. And then we'll get to the option question near the end because it may need some massaging and tweaking even then. Okay? So whoever would like to go first, please put your hand up. It comes to Kelman. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship and through you. What I am thinking is that comparing the two projects, Mapleview is a lot bigger in terms of how much it's costing. It's a lot more beds. It's almost twice the size of Sherwood. And yet Sherwood is asking for more funding from us. My thinking is that I would like to go ahead with the recommended funding for Mapleview, but offer Sherwood, but less for Sherwood than what we're giving Mapleview.
My apologies. Councillor Kelman, when you say you want to go ahead with, it's the thirty thousand dollars for Mapleview and less for Sherwood Park, do you have a number that you have in mind?
Twenty thousand came to, came, was what I was sort of thinking. But yeah.
Okay. So I've got that written down. So we'll move forward with the next individual who'd like to speak to this. Councillor Jamison, did you?
Just, just the question about, are these the only two that we're likely to hear from?
It's the only two that we've received delegations from and an ask.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
In the context of this budget year.
So we've already approved budget. We will be contemplating potential surpluses from the two thousand twenty three budget, which could be utilized to deal with this, or we can deal with it for next year's budget.
Well, the, your worship, the only reason I ask is because you, just anticipating your Bible to hear from somebody next year and the year after that. And I'm just wondering if, if there's, there are others out there that may be approaching us because of the the need to expand combination. And whether, I guess my point being is that we're going to turn around and make a three-year commitment in a way. I mean, we have to approve, prove it again next year, obviously. But if someone else comes along, are we going to be positioned to respond to them too, is all I'm saying. So if we can make a, a multi-year commitment now, does that close the door to others coming to us? I don't know if that's procedural or just.
I don't think it precludes anybody from, from asking. It's up to council to make the decision at that time. But the, I believe, just for further clarification on the three-year option, that was what was proposed by Mapleview Lodge or the G Tackberry Family Home, what will be. And, and that was also based off of essentially a dollar per, a dollar per head for population rounding up to the ten thousand dollar mark over three years. And I think the reason they did that, I'm not thinking, this is, the reason they did that is to make it more palatable from a budget perspective for other municipalities. Not every municipality has the additional funds like we do from the casino, for example, that are discretionary. It would have to come out of their tax levy. So it was more of an option that they brought forward to make it easier on the tax levy. Okay.
Sorry, I'll let the C O speak and then to councillor Lackey.
Just an observation, I was just looking at the presentation decks that the respective mayors gave council during their delegations. And I noted that for Sherwood Park, the, the cost of the project's forty one million. And the assistance that they're receiving from the province is nine million. For Mapleview, the cost of the project is eighty million and the provincial assistance that they're receiving is forty three million. So over half the cost of the project. So I think that might be a little bit of what's behind Sherwood Park's ask for more funds is that they're receiving less provincial assistance. So they have to make it up from somewhere. So that's what I pieced together on that, just so we understand.
Councillor Lackey, go ahead.
Thank you worship. I've got a couple of points here for the clarification. One is the operational versus capital and and as it pertains to our community grants, because I understand in reading this that this is where we would intend, unless we come up with another avenue for the funding. And I would ask that, you know, if we, we have a program for community grants, applications whereby they're, they're rated, you know, whether we, whether we do or, or how much we give as far as the grants program and where this fits in. You're coming to us rather than going through the grants process. So how can we, we balance that out? So we're consistent. And whether or not this is one-time funding or ongoing, I would not be in favor of ongoing for a couple of reasons. One is not to obligate future councils or, or to, to bind future council in, in this particular matter. And I think that's for the most part, the two points I guess I had.
Well, to speak to capital versus operational, just for clarity, the, the ask for Mapleview landings is definitely capital. And I believe I'm safe to say the same for Sherwood. These are not for operating expenses. These are for the nice to haves versus the expectation of ministry of health to have beds, certain beds, certain lifts, certain, there's, there's additional things that we can purchase like TVs and I say we, because I have to make that decision with county council. But absolutely no money that they're asking for in either of the requests are going to operating. It's all capital. And it, as far as I know, it's a one-time thing. It's, and that's a stipulation that we can obviously make based on our decision here tonight, whether we want to fund anything in the future, that would be up to future councils. But to your point, it's a one-time ask. Is there anything else I missed, Mr. Treasurer, that was asked there? I didn't think so. Okay. Go ahead councillor.
Um uh at first I was of a mind following uh Counselor Kelman's uh consideration that um the number of beds in the hospital. But when I think about it, the Brockville General Hospital, when they were doing their fundraising, they went around the municipalities and they said, you are using ten percent, you're using fifteen percent, you're using thirty percent. And that's the way they divvied it out. And it made total sense. They had those data, I guess. In this case, I thought about it. We don't really have that data. I am in favor of sponsoring. Um but with knowing the pressures uh that we have on our own budgets and not wishing to tie future councils to things that we decide now, perhaps middle ground would be to be pretty generous. Well, it's generous is this. We go three years for both programs. And that's it. Then then leave that up to future councils councils to determine whether they want to carry on. New propositions come, new delegations come to us. I don't have any problem really with the money. It's just fairness and not wanting to tie future uh this township to um something unforeseen. And my second point would be personally, I would prefer that money not come out of community grants. When I first joined this council, que- community grant money was eighty three thousand and change. We, within a year or two, bumped it to one twenty five. And then it has decreased because of COVID and because of the extreme pressures this council was under with our budget. So it got knocked back down to a hundred thousand. I am sure this township can spend a hundred and twenty five thousand on community grants. Um if they put their mind to it and people realize the money's out there and so on. So I would prefer the money not coming out of there. I would for three-year program for both, that's it. And it's just a question then of determining how much do you want to give each one? So I would go personally, Mapleview, they can have their ten thousand, and I don't mind really matching that for twenty thousand dollars a year for three years, split evenly, or pardon me, uh ten thousand each. That's fine by me. But call it a day at three years. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Fody, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, through you. Well, I could just say thanks to Counselor Grell, and I won't have to say another word. Um I agree with you a hundred percent. Um I don't want to see it committed to community grants because it's going to encumber somebody that really needs it right here in our own jurisdiction. And we've already spent it or allocated it. But at the same time, these facilities need our help. There's reason to reach out for it. And uh Counselor uh Lackey had a real good point. We don't want to encumber a next council, whether it's anybody still from this table or not. We want to make sure that we wrap up in our own little budgets among ourselves. But I agree, I'll just sum it up by agreeing with Counselor Grell. I think we should fund these and fund it over three years and find the money.
Okay. So we've heard from everybody except Mr. Maybe. Do you have anything to add or? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I also will uh agree with the uh Counselor Krell and Counselor Fody on a three-year plan to uh fund these wonderful additions to our community. And uh that our community grants money uh be spared for the small community grants that we have coming at us and uh help our our smaller municipality groups. So uh I guess that's option four in my mind. Thank you.
Okay, so follow up. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Sorry about that. There was one oversight on my part. In the case of the uh George Tackerberry Building, we have an option to get a naming on here or there, whether they're community rooms uh or what have you. I think we should take advantage of that. I think we've all been in facilities where there's dedications of this order that, and it goes on for, you know, forever, so to speak. And uh there will come a time when nobody sitting at this table is around. And and those after us can see where some of this money came from. I think we should, the option's there, and I think we should take it.
We can definitely request that the money go to a specific piece of something. So go ahead, Counselor.
Having a member of my family who's extremely involved in donor walls, it really becomes generally, and it should become, a committee. Or someone will be a designing a wall, and there will be categories. And if you look at Brockville General, I can't think of a better wall, never seen a better one. And categories, names attached, that that's everything you would want. But um I'm not so certain that that's something we can attach.
We can.
It's it's if they're already doing that, which they should already be doing that, then we would be part of it.
So the uh fundraising committee, which has already struck, speaking about the G Tackerberry Home, they already have mockups of the walls. The presentation just went to the fundraising committee. It's coming to Mapleview or the council uh for presentation, I believe, next month. So all of the all of the things that you've discussed are in play. And they and the mockups look very beautiful and appropriate for the home. So if everybody's had a chance to speak, I think, based on on the what I've heard, so everybody's in favor of the thirty thousand with Mapleview Lodge. The ask for uh Sherwood Park was fifty. I've got one dissension from that point of view to twenty, and I'm not sure how everybody else. Sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
For clarity, then I, if I might clarify my position, give them ten thousand each for three years, so they each get thirty thousand.
They each get thirty thousand? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Fody.
Thank you, worship. Uh likewise, that's what I read from Counselor Grell, those ten thousand each for three years, so.
Thank you for.
I would second that.
You you can get behind that, Counselor Kellman. Okay. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to take it one step further. So in uh in conversation with our treasurer prior to this meeting tonight, I had asked what we had budgeted for casino funds last year, and it was seven hundred thousand dollars. We received one million eighty three thousand five hundred and eighty six dollars. So we're shy of four hundred thousand dollars more than what we budgeted for revenues. This is this is the, not the taxation revenue, but the the revenue that we use to fund grants and capital projects. So if council is behind the thirty thousand dollars each and not wanting to take it out of the community grants pool, which I think has been heard loud and clear here, because we don't want to take opportunity away from our existing community partners who depend on that funding to support the good works they do here in the committee. Would it be a reasonable ask of council to withdraw the sixty thousand in total, thirty thousand for G Tackerberry Home and thirty thousand for Sherwood Park out of the surplus from this year's casino funds? And then it's done. And it it would be able to be an adjusting entry on the twenty twenty three books. It doesn't have any effect on the twenty-three budget or twenty-four budget or the twenty-five or the twenty-six. Correct, so surplus. We don't know just yet what the surplus is going to be, but go ahead.
But yeah, through you, just speak to that. So if that's what council wishes, part of year and the year-end allocation to whether there's a surplus or not would be there'd be an additional sixty thousand dollar transfer to the community grant reserve that we otherwise wouldn't be making. And we'd use that extra sixty thousand in the reserve to fund twenty twenty twenty.
So it's a shuffle, but but our current policy on surpluses uh is a bit different in that fifty percent of it goes to the contingency.
Fifty percent goes to the working fund.
Correct.
The way the current reserve fund policy.
So it would be easier if we gave direction this evening to to staff that we're supporting a thirty thousand dollar each Sherwood Park Manor and the G Tackerberry Family Home at to be paid out of any surplus from the casino revenue dollars for twenty twenty-three. Go ahead.
So just one other point on that. So the bottom line is sixty K goes out the door now.
Correct.
And that's it. We don't think about it for the next three years.
We don't think about it.
Okay.
Okay, and it doesn't affect the tax levy. It doesn't affect our ongoing operating. This is strictly out of the casino funds, which were not budgeted as revenue, the total amount. So I'll recognize Counselor Grell and then Deputy Mayor Fody.
Does anybody have any further, through you, your worship? Does anyone have any information regarding um Sherwood Park and where they are at in their reconstruction? I'm assuming everything is well above board with the amount of money they're receiving from governments. So therefore, do we have any qualms about um full amounts of money?
I can give you some information. I asked the one of the fundraising committee today. So um in their uh quest for additional dollars, uh City of Brockville has contributed five hundred K. Uh Elizabeth Town Kittley, a hundred K, Augusta, thirty two thousand five hundred, Elizabeth Town Cardinal, thirty five thousand. And the United Counties of Leeds and Greenville has contributed. This is Sherwood, sorry. Sherwood uh is three hundred and seventy-five K. So they, but to the point that the C A O made earlier, they have a much larger hill to climb than Mapleview Lodge. Okay, so okay, uh Deputy Mayor Fody, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. With that information, just to mess things up, if we will, should we be considering honoring the two requests? If we're taking the the monies from our casino money and we're using it in a grant process methodology anyway, I can't think of a much better place to put it for future residents, starting the moment the builds are up. I mean, if their hill is that much deeper to climb, it would make about another for the sake of argument, seven thousand dollars more a year towards Sherwood Park for three years, give it the fifty they're looking for. And uh the other question I did have to our treasurer, this money that we just spoke of of handling the way we're intend to do that, would they, either of these G Tackerberry or Sherwood, receive monies this calendar year?
They're held in trust, any monies they're held until it's finished.
Right, okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Because the money, the money for G Tackerberry is being used for the additional nice-to-haves at the end. So that money is being held, and I believe they're fairly close to one point five million of the three million dollar goal. Yeah, so um but the Sherwood Park Manor, I didn't total this up, but I know that that hill is a lot steeper because their commitment from the government is less than what um the G Tackerberry Home had. So um but if you look at it from a dollar ahead in the township, we're giving the same to uh G Tackerberry as well as Sherwood. And the the difficulty, we didn't really talk about this earlier, and I don't want to beliger this, but one of the challenges with whether or not our people are using one facility over another. Right now, there's not enough beds. So people are going where they can get a bed. It isn't necessarily where they would choose because it may not be as close to home as they'd want. But they're maybe stuck in a hospital bed and unable to get care or unable to go home because they do not have care. So they end up in a long-term care facility. Maybe not if they're choosing, there, I think they have to give three or five, you know, and rank them. But it's whatever bed comes up first. So I, to your point, Counselor Grell, about who uses what, it isn't always indicative of the people here wanting to be there, if that makes sense. So anyways, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. On your note of not being where they would like to be, I attended a celebration of life recently without mentioning name of a lifetime resident of this township who was not anywhere near here because of that very scenario. That person, an individual with healthcare had to be moved to different facilities, but never did end up where they wanted to be for the duration of the end.
So as of right now, I've still have thirty thousand dollars apiece on the table, which is the equivalent, give or take, a dollar ahead for three years. And we, the subsequent point being that we would take the sixty thousand in total to grant to both G Tackerberry Home and the Sherwood Park Manor out of the twenty twenty-three surplus casino funds. Does that make everybody happy? So that's option eight. Go ahead, Counselor.
The the only question then is if we decide to move with the sixty thousand dollars all at once immediately, that we signal that this is it for three years.
Yes.
So in other words.
Don't come back and.
Don't. So this is our commitment over the next three years. Is that consistent?
Yes.
What which others are doing, with which others are doing. So in other words, here it is, see ya. Right? I mean, I that's.
We made our.
But it's, yeah.
If we choose to pay it upfront rather than over a three-year period.
Yeah. They just need, well, it's an advantage to the organization.
Because they.
To get the money upfront, absolutely. But we need to make that clear in any transaction, in my my opinion, your worship, just because they will come back and ask, as well they should, right? That's.
Sorry, Counselor Maybe, did you have anything else you'd like to add before we put the amended motion on the floor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um I was kind of uh thinking about Counselor Fody's suggestion that, and because we're now looking at strictly the casino profits, let's say, and using it for uh the full amount, I might reconsider that for the full amount for um Sherwood Park also and the full amount for Mapleview. And the only, the only thing that by doing it that way changes is the amount that we actually put into reserve funds possibly. But because the casino is still there and operating and giving us funds every year, I don't see it as a um a minus when we can help our community, our fellow community and our seniors of the future to have great beds uh with great staff and facilities that are well worth it. So I would kind of go with that scenario then of being option four, I guess. Thank you.
Sorry, just one second, please. So um based on uh Counselor Maybe's point is that maybe we should be considering the fifty for Sherwood Park. So as of right now, the amendment is written thirty and thirty, but I'm, but it, nothing's been solidified yet. There's no amended motion on the table. Go ahead.
As I read the report, I understand that Sherwood is not getting as much money from the government. Have they already secured the twenty-five million dollar loan that they is part of their funding? Or if they got more funding from other sources, would they borrow less?
I I believe that they they had to receive, they had to prove to the lender that they had other commitments from other municipalities. And the some of these commitments are just coming in now. So they had to show that the community was supportive of the project before they I don't, I think it's in the works, but I don't think they've got the final approval at this point.
Um, thank you, worship. So the the way I was looking at it is that Sherwood is looking for five million dollars from the community. That's, the rest is coming from other sources, if we include that twenty-five million dollar loan. It sounds like they are getting the support that they will need to demonstrate. So that is twelve percent of their total project cost is what, whereas although um Mapleview is getting a lot more from the province, they still need to fund thirty-seven million dollars, which is going to come from taxpayers if it doesn't come from another source. So that's the way I am looking at it, that it is still a much larger percentage of the total project that they need to find contributions for at Mapleview and because the facility is almost twice as big. So that's why I'm, I just feel uncomfortable having a larger amount go to Sherwood Park. That's where my thinking.
So you're okay with the thirty.
I'm I'm okay with the thirty, but a fifty just seems excessive to me.
Okay.
Personally.
Go ahead, uh Counselor Deputy Mayor Fody.
Thank you, worship, through you. Uh Counselor Kelman's uh thoughts resonate. And to Counselor Jameson and others have mentioned it, we're only locking in for three years here. So there's nothing. So there's nothing stopping Sherwood or anybody else for that matter, for coming back to another council for an ask. And at that point, I'm sure they'd be glad to take 20,000 or, or perhaps more at that time. Thank you.
Okay.
In other words, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not holding steadfast that on my proposal, we pay Sherwood 50,000.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor. That's already been on the floor. Great, this is a new motion. This motion is already on the floor, so I have to amend this motion.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So here is the amended motion based on the discussion so far. That Committee of the Whole recommends that council support the request from Mapleview Landings in the amount of $10,000 annually for three years. Totalling $30,000 and support the request from Sherwood Park Manor in the amount of $10,000 annually for three years. Totalling 30,000 to be paid out of the 2023 Casino Surplus Funds. So it's, it's, it's doing what Counselor Jameson has asked, which is it's the three year payment, but they're getting it upfront. And it's for $30,000 apiece. Counselor Correll? I, I haven't got a mover and a seconder on this amended motion, but I'm gonna take.
I just, as I heard you read that, it did sound like it was not going to be a payment upfront. It sounded like it was going to be three years, 10,000. That's how, that's how it sounded to me, so.
Okay. So, okay. We're just gonna amend that and then I'll get a mover, a mover and a seconder for the amendment. Okay. We knew this would be a bit of a dog's breakfast. We apologize. Well, the treasurer wanted to make sure that all options were available, but sometimes it's hard. We're simple creatures here, so too many options make it a little more challenging by times. Okay. So the amended motion would read that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council support the request for Mapleview Landings in the amount of 30,000. And support the request from Sherwood Park Manor in the amount of 30,000 to be paid out in full of the 2023 Casino Surplus Fund. Okay, so doesn't quite speak to your three year thing, but we'll make it implicitly clear in the letter. When we send the check. Okay, okay, so I need a mover and a seconder for that, please. I have a mover from Counselor Kelman. For the amended motion and a a seconder is Deputy Mayor Fode. Okay. Any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it's carried. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move forward with 6.4 on the Agenda Partnership for Economic Enhancement and Revitalization Working Group Peer Terms of Reference and New Working Group Member Request. So the motion comes forward from Deputy Mayor Fode, seconded by Counselor Jameson. The Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the updated peer working group terms of reference. And that the new member request of the Lindhurst Community Organization be accepted as attached to Corporate Services 2024-004. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Counselor Lackey.
Thank you, worship. And through you. Here, I often think about this and how it came to be. Peer group originally was Communities in Bloom, which is a beautification of our communities. And, and each one being individual in their tastes and that kind of thing. And, and a lot of times groups like Lafer Sabara. They were constantly kind of fighting over the same money, whether it was grants or, or the like. So the suggestion was made that they get together and, and pool the resources and larger lumps of money could be prioritized through the groups. So we went from Communities in Bloom to a beautification to now here. Which seems like it's, it's dragging us. It's good information. It's, it's hands on on the ground, but it seems like we're adding another level of bureaucracy within the community. Typically, I thought as a counselor, we were you know, engaged in getting information and, and bringing things forward to council. So I don't know if it's repetitious, perhaps. I don't know how people see it. But nonetheless. Where, do we need this many?
So just to your bureaucracy comment, I think that making this a working group rather than a standing committee of council has changed the dynamic of the group. Because it's not there's no clerk required to be part of it. Our community development officer is the person who is the point of contact. And it's really more about working together as a number of community groups. So I don't, I think it's the opposite personally, but.
No, I guess where I'm going with this is that it went from beautifying our neighborhoods to now bringing things, different, other things to council that we, I think, should be dealing with on a higher level. On our own.
But this
It's no longer, it's no longer about communities improvement and beautification. It's it's gotten more into the political side of things.
Okay. Comments, Deputy Mayor Fode?
Thank you, worship, and through you. When I looked at this list, much like Counselor Lackey. What jumped off the page of me is Lansdowne Agriculture Society is a privately owned entity. They're not a nonprofit. I mean, if they can make profit, then they're going to put it back into the fairgrounds. We want to be careful, I think, as a council. Looking to financially support a privately owned entity. We could find other ways they could do that. They could apply for grants. But lump them into Counselor Lackey's indication, put them into a peer group scenario, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I'd be glad to support Lansdowne Agriculture Society in other ways. But I'm not comfortable having them or the Chamber of Commerce, either or, for that matter. I could be persuaded on the chambers, but I do know for a fact that Lansdowne Agriculture Society is registered privately owned. All that land across the road belongs to them. Thank you.
Counselor Correll, go ahead.
I'm somewhat confused through you, your worship. Under financial implications, it says there are four groups that would be receiving money. They're pretty much the four groups that have been part of peer. As I understand it, so I, I'm not quite certain where the privatization nonprofit groups or others are there. Are they written in here somewhere?
I'm gonna let the treasurer speak to this.
Deputy Mayor, yeah, so under number four on the terms of reference, it does list the other community groups as well. But Counselor Correll is correct, there's only four that actually receive financial support from the township in terms of the administrative. And those are the, the four listed, so the, the chambers and the LAS don't actually receive direct financial support from the township. They are members of peer because they are important to the different events and things that go on in the township, so their input's valued in that way as being a part of group, but they don't actually receive financial support. It's just the four local nonprofit groups that receive that support.
And they're also contributing to the beautification of each of the respective communities. Because of what they do with their events. Okay. Counselor Kelman and then Counselor Jameson.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I do see the purpose of peer because we are a very disparate township. We, you know, with all the different settlement areas. And I think just in terms of if these groups can come together, just in terms even of planning, so that we don't have the Rockport and the Lansdowne tree lighting on the same night, that kind of thing. It's, it's an important tool for that. I actually didn't know a lot about peer prior to reading this report. I actually thought there was far more groups involved in it. But again, I, I had some questions for Tracy and she responded and CAO as well responded. So I do see why we're keeping it to sort of a, a smaller number of groups. My concern was about the funding because the Lindhurst Community Organization is a very new group. It hasn't even actually officially joined peer yet. And I did ask Tracy why we're, what administrative needs might be, why the, what, what these groups would need the money for. And I understand it's primarily for insurance, so that they have insurance to cover when they're hosting events and that kind of thing. But this new group in Lindhurst. I don't, we don't really know what they're going to be doing yet, or we know that the two big events being Turkey Fair and the Santa Claus Parade in Lindhurst. For this year anyway, are going to be hosted once again by the chamber. So their insurance will cover it. So I just was a little bit wary until we know a little bit more about what this group might be doing, what, if it's needed in the community. I understand it's sort of a reorganization of the Lindhurst Rejuvenation Committee, which certainly did a lot of work in the community. But this is a new group that's sort of untested. So that's why I just wasn't sure about right off the bat lumping them in and giving them the funding.
So I think as per the previous comment, the only funds that go out are the, to the four groups. So. Oh, sorry. My apologies. I must have read that incorrectly.
Yes, this, this new Lindhurst group, so in 2023, there was no Lindhurst group that received the funding. It used to be Lindhurst Rejuvenation. But my understanding is they disbanded, so they didn't actually receive money in 2023. So this group is proposing that they be that group for Lindhurst. To, and will receive that funding.
So then the, the follow up question to that would be in, if they do not continue on after year two, year three. Then we can change the terms of reference at that point in time to reallocate those funds, correct? We would have to change the terms of reference. Correct? Okay. So to your discomfort. I guess it would be a one year commitment and then have to be revisited in subsequent years. And then I've got Counselor Jameson.
So begs a question from me, why? I know that the genesis of peer was around for that. And at the time, the groups involved and the chamber was not involved, the, the, the Linder Sealy's Bay Chamber was not involved at that time. And every, every year they came to the table and said, we want to be part of this. But the genesis of it, the groups that were at the table were actually running events. There was not one group involved. So when they met, whether it was Rockport or the Lands, the two groups in Lansdowne or the Sealy's Bay Group and LRC, they were all doing things. And I know the discussion around the Sabara table was always we, we need a little help with the insurance. And we even had a long discussion at one point about whether we could have an umbrella policy through the township. And I remember that going around and going nowhere. Because of the, the challenges of, of underwriting. So I'm over that, but I really wanted to see that happen instead. And I think it was a reasonable option to ensure that the groups that were engaged in events had a little help there. And I know in the case of Sabara, they took the truffle shuffle under their, their wing up there. They also took the Canada Day under their insurance wing up there. So, and I think now Sabara is going to run the Canada Day. Oh, goodie, something else to do. But that's all good, but, but that was why the administrative fee was there. So at this juncture, we don't really have a process that determines who can come in and who can come out. So my concern is that we need, or my suggestion is we move to some sort of pro, onboarding process for respective or prospective groups before we just simply approve something because there it is. I mean, I just don't understand that from, from a practical procedural issue. Nothing against any group, just that show me why and what's the matrix? And perhaps in my other point, this is tangential, is perhaps maybe all of this administrative stuff could be moved into the community grant matrix. Where there is an assessment done of a project. Which would be, say Sabara come and say, we want the insurance because we're going to run five events and we need the coverage. And that's pretty clear. There's a process and a matrix in place. So I'm looking for a process to onboard groups because chances are there's going to be others that come forward. Thank you.
So are you proposing that we defer this to the next meeting for pending further thought on how this works?
Well, I hadn't thought of that, but yes, as a matter of fact, I'd be more comfortable with a deferral. And, and your worship and some, some form of process that, that doesn't just you know, we, we jump at the beginning of the very short discussion about the shift to a working group. And then suddenly we're talking about a new group coming in and there's just, there's just too much white space in there for me. I'd, I'd like to defer it and have more clarity. Thank you.
Counselor Kelman?
Yeah, I, I don't have a, sorry, through you, your worship. I don't have a problem with the new group being part of peer. I think that's a good thing for a communication tool. But I think we need to separate the membership in peer from the funding, which it is separate because not all of the groups involved receive funding. So I like Counselor Jameson's idea that perhaps do it through the community grant mechanism. But it shouldn't be an automatic, if you become part of peer, then you get the funding. That I think it needs to be separated and there needs to be some sort of
So now that I've, now that I've said that. Or I suggested it, perhaps it's just a matter of proving the terms of reference minus the LRO. Or what, whatever the short form is for the new group. Because until, and then have a year on the committee to prove exactly what it is they want to do to come forward. I just, what I don't want to do and, and Mr. Treasurer, can you speak to if there's any holdback with anything if we do not? Cause everything else in the terms of reference seem to be okay with everybody other than this one line item. So I don't want to hold up anything on your end from a process point of view by not having the new terms of reference approved. If this is the main issue.
Through your worship, no, this, this is fine. If it was approved otherwise, we just would not extend that, that funding until we receive that.
Further, further in direction. Okay, Mr. CAO, please go ahead.
Okay, to approve the terms of reference with the appropriate modification to delete references to Lindhurst Community Organization. That's the only thing.
That's the only thing, so. So if you wanted to come back with different terms of reference. We can defer it and we can go back to the drawing board, so to speak, or we can approve it as presented tonight, save that minor change, removing the LCO. Lindhurst Community Organization. It's up to the council what they want to do. Go ahead, Counselor.
But then the LR, this, this, keep calling Millersy. This new group. The
LCO.
Right. This new group then would apply to become part of this. And then what is the criteria against which you bench the qualification?
Okay. So perhaps the deferral is the better option because then we can come back with terms if, if staff is understands or has enough conversation. Counselor Correll, does that, do you have something to add?
It, I appreciate the confusion of bringing in, how do we incorporate Lindhurst community into this? But I don't want to be seen as punitive to Rockport Development Group or Sabara. And I know that every budget I have seen since I've been sitting in this chair allocated $2,000. And it was always noted it was for insurance. And we're all the way up after all these years to 3,000 and change. It's not a ton of money. It seems punitive simply because it's been moved to a working group and we're looking for a mandate. I think the problem is, if I'm hearing it right, is we are not quite confident in exactly who the Lindhurst representation is. So I think, I don't know what proves it you're asking. Counselor Jameson is asking for some kind of matrix. Well, what are the matrix? What, what's the data from Rockport Development Group? They've been around a long time. They've done a lot of good work. They've fundraised for a ton of things. Rockport Park, for instance. I know them all. Lafer, I don't, but I'm sure you do. So what exactly, what criteria would we ask staff to look for? That's very That's very fuzzy to me. So I, anyway, I don't want to be punitive. And it's not a ton of money. And I think we should push it out there. And the community grant money still sits right there for any one of those groups to ask for it. That's exactly the way the original budget was. You would see an example, you would see Rockport Development Group, $2,000 to, you know, insurance. And then they would have other asks through the year and it all came out of community grants, as far as I remember. So, thank you.
I don't think, Mr. Treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it penalizes us not approving it tonight. Penalizes any groups that have received funding or will receive funding in the future.
My understanding would be it would be status quo at this time. And under status quo, the other three groups are already in the terms of reference to receive that.
So they would still receive it?
That's mine.
Until we change.
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't, so that to your point, it wouldn't preclude those groups from getting the money because the the old terms of reference are still in place. This terms of reference includes a new organization, which is in question as how you, how do you get on the list? So but I think that based on this discussion, that it goes back to staff to come up with, whether it's a list of questions and whether it's as simple as what's your business plan for your group? What are you planning on accomplishing? So that we can make an educated choice here at council. And yes, it's not that much money. However, to the point that's been made by a couple of other counselors, it, at this point, anybody could come forward and say, well, we have this new group, you should give us insurance money. We could all start making up groups tomorrow. So so I think the deferral, based on the conversation so far, makes sense. So Brian, you want to weigh in on this? Go ahead.
It's my familiar and to the group. By what I'm hearing, most of these groups are receiving money for insurance purposes. And I believe with Linder's Community Organization, the reason they're coming to us is because of the building and its requirements to have insurance and also their events, because they have the building to actually maintain. And I thought in one of our previous. No.
They don't, they don't have a building and they don't have any events planned that we're aware of. And I think that's the question at hand.
But isn't the Linder's Community Organization, the Turkey Fair and the Christmas Parade all amalgamated?
No, the Linters Sealy's Bay Chamber of Commerce has taken over both Turkey Fair and the Santa Claus Parade. And they have their own insurance, which they operate under because the LRC, the original Linters Group had folded prior to that. This is a new group of people who've come forward to revitalize a new group, if you will. And that's what they're looking for. So go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship and through you. My understanding is the original Turkey Fair people have articles of incorporation under the the Turkey Fair name, which they aren't using. They have registered the Linder's Community Organization as a business name under their Articles of Incorporation as the Turkey Fair. So that's how they've constituted themselves as a group. But very good points. We're not exactly sure what they are going to do, what their mandate is in the village. And so I think going forward for any organization that wishes to become part of of Peer, we certainly should have a basic application form with how are you organized, are you incorporated? What what do you plan to do? What's your mission statement? What are your, what are your first, you know, first three years out? What are your events? What do you, what do you want to do in the village? And at least that gives us some idea of what this group is.
Because right now I think it's it's very loose and I I think that's what's caused a lot of this conversation. But just to reassure the groups that are already listed and in the old terms of reference, they will continue to receive funding as per the existing terms of reference. But we're going to defer this to come back with staff will provide further information on how one gets added to this list before we approve the new terms of reference. Okay? So Counselor Jameson, you're deferring until the April meeting?
I mean.
April Committee of the Hall. And seconder for that deferral, Kellman? Okay, so I will ask call the question on the deferral. All those in favor of deferring till April? And that is carried. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, it is quarter to eight. We've been here since six o'clock. Everybody bio break and then we'll come back at five to five to eight. Thank you. If we, okay, so the next item on the agenda is a, sorry, 6.5 purchase of 2024 Freightliner Single Axiom Pumper Tanker moved by Counselor Kellman, seconded by Counselor Grelle, the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize staff to proceed with the purchase of a 2024 Freightliner Single Axiom Pumper Tanker from the Commercial Emergency Equipment Company in the amount of $749,892 plus net HST. Discussion on the motion. Deputy Mayor Foddy, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship and through you. This is a tough pill to swallow right after a budget. I know that things happen. My first thought on this, and it still is my thought for tonight, fix the frame. You can fix a frame on a truck easy.
This is already included in the 2024 budget.
I'm sorry, is it? I thought this was a surprise.
No.
All right, I stand corrected.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, I just didn't want you to go too far down that lane.
Well, I was headed down that way because I thought, you know, this is an awful lot of money to be added to. So if my heart feels much better now, thank you.
Okay.
In which case, then I highly support this because it's gonna, it's gonna give the fire department a chance to park these two older trucks that are gonna soon park themselves before the department does. So knowing this, it's it's a much different avenue and and much more palatable. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks. Just through you, your worship, we did purchase a big piece of equipment. Was it last year or the year before? What was the, were they both pumper tankers? This is the second one in two years?
Through through your worship, the two trucks that we purchased in 22 and 23 were frontline pumpers. This is a pumper tanker. It's a tanker essentially. But we buy them with the ability to pump as well. And basically, the the truck that came out of service in 23 was definitely a surprise to us. It was a 2004. We didn't think we were going to be in that much trouble until we met with the mechanic and he said, the frame is the frame is pushed apart, just the way those are, those are built. They're a double wall and the they've sprung apart with the rust that's great inside of them. They're very hard to get cleaned out. It's a flaw in those in those chassis. The other two, the 95 and 97, the 95 will come out of service in March for the same reason. And then the 97, we'll, we're going to do our best to get one more year out of it. So they've come off the road for safety reasons. So these smaller tankers with the pumpers on them as well, they they met, they go into smaller areas for us. They they back up our tanker shuttle survey.
But so in the last three years, how many tankers have we purchased?
Just this one. The the other two each come with a tank. They're 1,000 gallons on the frontline pump. But this pumper tanker comes in with 1,500 gallons to all water back and forth. The other ones traditionally stay at the scene, these these trucks when we're shuttling water back and forth move.
Where I'm going with that is in that these things have a fixed timeframe and I see you've put in 25 years, we've gotten away from 20. In that they have a fixed timeframe, that means that every umpteen years, this township is faced with spending millions. If I was buying a set of bonds, I would ladder it for security purposes. And is there any way we can get around in 20 years' time, spending $3 million a truck in successive years? Is there any way that we can think ahead to spreading that out? Because I think previous administrations have maybe let that go a little bit and and here we are. It appears to me we are spending money hand over fist and we'll be into debt. Some of this, I'm sure, and and it'll be even worse probably when all of this comes due. That's where I'm getting at. It's all going to come due at once.
Through your worship. Yes, through your worship, the the tankers are 25 years, the they can be used as a frontline pump. These tankers as well can be used as a frontline pump. But I get 25 full years as a tanker out of that. So even if they lose their frontline capacity after 20, these trucks can go out to 25 because they're they're classed as a tanker. So yes, you're absolutely right. I've come to you three years in a row looking for trucks. The first one that I came to was two years behind being bought. It was it was out of date by two years when I became chief. The first one that I came to was two years behind being bought, it was, it was out of date by two years when I became chief. And then the next one that we got last year, that, that, that truck would come out of frontline as of right now. These tankers, this tanker was a surprise, the ninety-five and the ninety-seven, they're, they're well over twenty-five years. They actually didn't even count in the tanker shuttle survey, there were just extra water for us, just to try to keep the, the numbers up. So being two tankers short come the end of this month, that's gonna put a major strain on us, so that's why we're coming. In and between the director of operations and I, we're trying to, we're trying to space these out as much as we can, but I can't, I can't, make that problem go away until it's looked at first.
Just follow up to you, your worship, and when we have our new fire hall built, do we have enough equipment to sta-, enough equipment to put in there? Or we, can we staff our four service, fire halls, or are we gonna be, two frontline pumpers with some equipment spread around it, it's unclear, do we need a report? I wouldn't mind a written report of how we plan to fill our fire halls with our equipment. It's all very confusing and it's so terribly expensive, I, I wouldn't mind understanding how we fill all our fire halls. Thank you.
Through your worship, the new fire hall in Sealy's Bay will be outfitted with the trucks that are currently in the Sealy's Bay Hall right now. So we bought a brand-new pumper in there, almost brand-new pickup truck and the tanker, pumper tanker that's in there, that's a tandem, matches the one out at Station One in Lansdowne and it's two thousand and seven, so we still have some time left on that truck before we'd have to service it.
Bottom line is, we're not buying a bunch of new fire trucks to fill the new fire hall. Okay, okay, I just read between the lines there, Mr. Gurrell, go ahead, deputy mayor.
Thank you, worship through you, chief, you had mentioned or indicated, are the newer trucks a different configuration where they're not gonna, they're not double walled, you had touched on that with the old one, so I assume the new ones are totally different?
Through your worship, the freightliner frames definitely don't, aren't constructed the same way as those GM topkicks were. Just the way the, the body frame was constructed around it, there was no way to get at them and wash them out quite the way we, quite the way we, would like to have with the newer styles, it, it definitely makes it a little different. And there's a few more options that we can do to help clean the underside of those trucks as well. Because they were also weren't undercoated for years and years and we've been starting to undercoat the tankers every couple of years just to, to keep those a little longer on the body frame.
More preventative maintenance.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, and I, you know, a couple of comments there, as our asset management comes into full play, it certainly will look after the requirements of getting a truck that's being built and then retrofitted a little bit. We can actually put a purchase order out well, well ahead of time since they take about two years to actually build brand-new, so we can look after it that way. But this smaller, single axle truck is very vital for our back roads. And with this particular truck, it's also a little different in its pump configuration and maybe the chief can enlighten us a bit more on that.
Through your worship, this tanker has a smaller, wheelhouse, we'll call it, behind where the pump panel sits, it's in behind an enclosed door. The way that Maxi Metal makes it is exactly like the newer, newer style pumps we have out in Sealy's Bay and Lynnhurst. So they're much better protected, the pump panels are, the actual unit where you put, hook up the hoses is, is a little bit narrower. And then the, the pump panel itself is much better protected than in the other trucks, and it's a side-mount pump, not a top-mount pump.
Okay.
This is a follow-up there, the other truck that it's replacing, the other one was a vacuum pump and this is a different style pump, correct?
Through your worship, yes, it is a centrifugal pump on this, this truck. The vacuum trucks were nice, you could pump, pump water on them in, in a small puddle. These ones are a little bit different, but we have the ability to fill those as well, or it can fill itself fairly rapidly.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on this motion, all those in favor, all those opposed, and it's carried. Thank you. Next item is six point six, council appointment of two OPP detachment board. Moved by councillor Kelman, seconded by councillor Gurrell, the committee, the whole recommends that council appoint blank as the council representative to the Leeds County OPP detachment board. So council members, you have the report in front of you in regards to this board makeup. There's no sort of, we don't know when the meetings are going to be held, whether it be daytime, nighttime, which I know limits some people. But we have to appoint somebody to the board that is willing to give their time. So please keep in mind that we don't know when the meetings are going to be. So if that precludes you from putting your hand up, I just wanted to make that known. We can always change it to if it becomes, if, if it works better for one person or another, but for right now, we need to submit a name, correct, Mr. CAO?
That's correct.
Okay, so, does anybody have a burning desire? Councillor Lackey, go ahead.
I don't have a burning desire, but I think you and I, at the start of your term, had a meeting with OPP about a, a committee that, this kind of fits the bill, I think, and, and if no one else, I have a fairly flexible schedule, so.
Okay.
I don't mind, but if someone does have a burning desire, I'm out.
I was going to offer the same thing, but I'm happy to defer to you, I have lots of meetings already. So if there's, unless there's any other council member that wants to put their name forward. Councillor Lackey, it is. So the motion now reads, the council, the committee of the whole recommends that council appoint councillor Lackey as the council representative to the Leeds County OPP detachment board. Further discussion on the motion? Do you want, sorry, did you want to put your hand up? Hand goes away, okay, all those in favor, all those opposed, and we're carried. Thank you for volunteering, if this becomes a burden with any other commitments you have, Sir Lackey, please step forward and let us know and we can make alternative arrangements. I don't think we're gonna discuss that tonight, anyways, so, next item is unfinished business. I have nothing, no hands up, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Through you, your worship, I'm not sure if this is, it really hasn't come before council, however, Rockport held a public meeting of which I was in attendance with, with our Director of Infrastructure and Operations and so on. And the parking issue came up and it was about the parking signs going up. And really, there were three recommendations or three points that came out of that meeting. And because we are coming into the summer, when things get a little more important down there, one would be, this one's a little less important, enforcement of that could be April to October. And because it's a village that's busy in the summer, so generally the parking, okay. But more importantly, there were the desire for a cup, two or three additional spots right by the Customs Park. And they, right now, we have the jersey, are those jersey barriers there? So it would be right down by where the wharf goes out there. The discussion was perhaps we could put a couple of handicap parking or a couple of spots there and turn the handicap parking right in front of the park. That, that was a big deal. And the other big deal was, there are three spots immediately to the east of that park, on the road that contractors have been using forever. And rather than eliminate them, the village seemed to go with the theory that make that two-hour parking. And the theory was that if someone comes to the Rockport Park dock and they want to go to the grocery store, they need perhaps somewhere to park. So the contractors right now are using it all day, that's gotta stop. But we, those points, I don't want to see them lost, so I don't know if that's, if we can deal with that. The, I'm not too concerned right now about the April to October enforcement of the no parking, because that's the entire village pretty much, by the way. The roadway, but we could put three spots at the chain with two-hour parking and we could definitely add a couple of spots there, right in front of that customs park, so that there would be parking for people for a period of time. Perhaps we could, I hope we can, that's sort of where we went.
Go ahead, Director Holiday.
Thank you, through your worship, I'd like to meet with councillor Gurrell out on site and have a look at these and just make sure that we're, we get it right. Sure. And it might be beneficial for Marnie to come with me as well in terms of the enforcement. So we, we meet down there, make sure that we pick the spots out and then talk about the timelines for enforcement as well, too.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that would be terrific because those, that was basically how we put that to bed, that meeting. Thank you.
You turned your microphone up.
That's it for other business. However, I could and should, last Wednesday night was a meeting of the CRCA. So quickly, a new director, a general manager was found, David Ellingwood, and he will start April twenty-ninth. The other issue would be more planning, however, a regulation came in to solidify all of the, conservation authorities, thirty-six of them throughout Ontario, to get rid of the individual hazards and so on. So they eliminated all of those individual, and in our jurisdiction, CRCA was Regulation one forty-eight oh six, which you often hear about hazards, natural hazards, that's revoked, and a new province-wide one's forty-one twenty-four. And why is it important? Because it defines what is a wetland. And the new definite, well, the definitions as I read them might influence some people in how development happens and it's gonna shock them, when you can't build near that swale or that, because that swell has a potential of being wet. So there's, I think it got a little broader and that might make some people unhappy. Quickly, mandatory programs and services, just better reporting, stuff that I could bring to you if anyone's interested. And thirdly, rules of conduct in all of conservation areas. They handle it under a regulation called nine fifty, which is exactly the same regulation that handles, every infraction in this province, from liquor to highway traffic, it's all, there's hundreds of them. So what they decided is they will make the rules of conduct in conservation areas, again, throughout Ontario. They will standardize it and there are fines, et cetera, et cetera, walking your dog off a leash, camping in there, you know, stuff like that. It doesn't affect every day, but it would if someone got caught. And it is being handled under the Provincial Offences Act. I brought up that this township had gotten away from that. And the good people in Kingston were aware of that type of thinking. But at this time, conservation areas still deal with provincial act, so the money goes to the province. And that's about it from the committee, permy CRCA meeting, and they're in their new building. So they, some years ago, I guess, they decided to go north front neck in a building and that, it's now open. So they've gotten rid of the nineteen fifty's building, which is really a dilapidated old thing at the Katerak Way, area, conservation area, wholly inadequate. They're now moved some distance to a joint effort with North Front Neck. And they've just moved in, there you go, thanks.
So we are at other business, go ahead, councillor Lackey.
Sorry, worship, I don't know if you have it coming up on your updates, but the clocks this weekend, I believe.
I will make sure that we'll talk about that. Okay, thank you, and we're at other business. Okay, I have a resolution, or, sorry. Oh, Marnie, yeah, that's the one I've got coming. So I, I do have a proposed motion to put on the floor, it's moved by councillor Kelman and seconded by councillor Lackey, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as the special public meeting date for zoning bylaw amendment five oh seven dash five one five thousand Islands Parkway and fourteen, dash thirty-six McCray's Bay Lane. So this is a resolution coming forward to set a date and time to have a special meeting, which would only be pertaining to this zoning bylaw amendment. So it's come forward so that we can book it into the calendar and allow the planning department to give twenty days' notice, which is under the Planning Act regulation. So does anybody on council have an issue with the date of March twenty-fifth as a special date? Please check your calendars. Six PM, and this would be an open meeting for anybody to attend, in regards to the zoning bylaw amendment to be coming forward. So this would be, we had a preliminary public meeting. There was an open house at the applicant's place of business. And this would be a second public meeting to have the final or get final comments before the report comes forward for council consideration.
I can just clarify, the original public meeting that was held here was a community public meeting, the application had not yet been deemed complete. We've now completed two peer reviews and two circulations of the application to a point where we're prepared to deem it complete, which means that we have to have a public meeting, a statutory public meeting. The reason that we're asking for a special meeting is because, it's a challenge booking the public meeting for something where we know we're gonna get significant public input prior to a council or a committee of the whole meeting, because we have to run these meetings to allow people to have their say without cutting them off at a certain time.
We want to give sufficient time in that way without having another meeting behind it. We're not rushing anybody and we have fulsome time to give everyone to have their say. So does the twenty-fifth work for everybody? Go ahead, councillor.
That is possibly the worst day of the year for me, through circumstances I don't want to talk about. I have an all-day mediation that I have to attend, and I appreciate this is an evening meeting, but this one's important to me. Both ways, I, I'm willing to say yes, but it's a terrible day for me, thank you.
Is there any alternative dates that would work better for council? The twenty-sixth, the Tuesday? So we, that, the twenty-sixth is the staff council training session on the twenty-sixth. It's pretty much, we can make it till three, but then it doesn't give everybody, yeah, we can do it. If, it's up to, it's up to council, I, I wanna make this as convenient as possible. So if we can make it the twenty-sixth, the Tuesday, that works for staff? Okay, so I'm going to amend this to the twenty-sixth, I'm not gonna ask for an amendment to the motion, I'm just gonna change it with my pen. Because that's the date that works, if somebody wants to come after me, please. Yes, I'm going to probably, so. So the motion reads that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as a special public meeting date, for zoning bylaw amendment five oh seven dash five one five thousand Islands Parkway and fourteen dash thirty-six McCray's Bay Lane. So Tuesday, March twenty-sixth.
Six thirty.
Six, six o'clock, six PM. And it will be advertised to the public and it will be open for public comment, so please be, please ensure that you have the ability to share this, to let people know so they have their, they know, they're aware when it's gonna happen. Okay, with that, I will call the question, all those in favor of March twenty-sixth, all those opposed, and it is carried. All right, any other, other business? Okay, we're moving on to notices of motion, any notices of motion? No notices of motion. Okay, move on to the mayor's update, I'll be as quick as possible, clocks go ahead this weekend, don't forget, because councillor Lackey wants to make sure that nobody's left behind. So for this week, International Women's Day is on March the eighth and this year's theme is inspire inclusion. When we inspire others to understand and value women's inclusion, we forge a better world. So I will be attending and speaking at the town of Ganunakuas International Women's Day, empowering women in a digital age, on March the eighth, and it is a free event to attend. We've asked to, I've encouraged the, We've asked to, I've encouraged the organizers to get as many of the grade twelve ladies out, it's being held at the Fire Hall Theatre, I believe it starts at nine, nine-thirty. Councillor Kelman, I believe, is also attending alongside me, not speaking but attending, hoping maybe for part of it. But I've been part of a number of these events and they've always been really, really great, especially with the younger groups that come through, so it's always a good day. So if you'd like to attend, Fire Hall Theatre, register, March the eighth, nine till twelve-thirty. March break is just around the corner, please visit our community events calendar on our website for the upcoming events that are happening over March break. Keep in mind that our council meeting is on March the eighteenth, not next Monday because of March break. The application period for our youth bursary program is now open until March thirty-first. Township residents graduating from high school in either twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four and planning to pursue full-time post-secondary education in twenty twenty-four are encouraged to apply. Calling all cemetery board members and operators, the application period is now open for the cemetery grant program. Active and inactive cemeteries located within the township that function on a nonprofit or volunteer basis are eligible to apply. Applications are due on or before March thirty-first. Keep an eye out for the Township Times publication for April to June twenty twenty-four, it will be sent out in the mail later this week. So thank you very much for reminding about the clocks, because as much as our phones automatically change, those ones on the walls do not, generally speaking. So is there any other things that I have forgotten to mention, events that are happening or important issues? Okay, I will let that go then, we'll move on to adjournment. Motion to adjourn comes from councillor Kelman and seconded by councillor Lackey that the committee of the whole adjourn. We will be having a special council meeting right after this, but it is a very short meeting, so all those in favor of adjournment, all those opposed, and we're carried.